I think seven minute pause. Have you ever heard that?
Six thirty, call a meeting to order. Certify compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Manke.
Here.
Councilmember Raceler.
Here.
Councilmember Weisenbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Weissapple.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to adjourn the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion in second to adopt the agenda. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Now, for public comments, are there any public comments? If you do have any, please identify yourself for the record. Hearing none, we have two items on the consent agenda, the approval of the special city council meeting minutes from December thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and approve the budget comparison report from December twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It is approved. Next, we move on to the business agenda, administration, mayor's report, just a few things to talk about. I instructed the city administrator that we would be planning on having an economic development committee meeting coming up in the next month or so. She's already had some contact with some folks that have ideas. I know we, last year when we were still, before she was here, we did get some letters out to some people to try to encourage them with empty buildings and see if we could help. And of course, then we changed administrators and stuff like that. But again, we'd like to call, get an agenda together for, talk about things we could do, things we could go, so plan on having here in the first couple of months of twenty twenty five, an economic development, or economic development committee meeting. Also, would like to call the park board together. Would, as we know, the one thing about it is the swimming pool has drained us for several years, getting that, and I'd like to look at the future of our parks and look at what's next, or what we can look at, the groups that I would like to hear from, the people that would like to do something with the man shell. Obviously, we know that they have been raising money for that every time at Music in the Park. Usually Brian's up there announcing a fifty fifty winner, and that money goes to that. And just to see where we're at, originally, I know we had talked about, of course, the city being involved, but then also, you had the Blues people, you had Dig, Fun Fest, so on so forth. Well, of course, now if the Blues is moving down here, this has changed the dynamic a little bit, but that's okay. And then just generally talk about our parks, what we have and if there's plans. The other thing about it is I think we'd like to hear from the dog park people, see where they're at. I know that there's been some other ideas, but just to see where they're going and see, seeing where we're at. So those are the two subjects that I'd like to see on an agenda. And obviously, we'd invite certain people to come and help and have those discussions about those. But I think we should get the parks board together and start looking at those future plans. As I mentioned before, the swim club, or the swimming pool, as we've mentioned before, you will notice that there is work going on up there this week. They are working on the metal, the stainless steel gutter that goes around there. It's moving forward. At four thirty this afternoon, the city administrator and I met with the, met with the swim club. Basically, let's start tying up all ends for donations. It is correct, they still have some dollars that are in some CDs that is for the construction of the pool that we haven't seen yet. The city administrator has those numbers and the dates when they mature. It's all before June, so we've got time to, and exactly when those dollars. And then the other thing, with all the other, you know, donations we've received, again, there's a lot of different sources, just ask, and she's working on making sure we're checking for all those things as we're coming together. So, again, making sure we've got everything accounted for and that we're doing that. But no, good meeting with them here at four thirty this afternoon, so on so forth. I'm still looking for another person to appoint to the Board of Appeals. We had the opening position with passing of longtime member Jerry Hammer. If anybody, again, has an idea of somebody that would like to serve on the Board of Appeals, we're still looking for a person on there. One thing to announce, the new store in town, River and Grace, down here, the boutique, will be having a ribbon cutting at nine AM on January the thirtieth. I believe that's a Thursday, it's a Thursday morning, January thirtieth, nine AM, River and Grace, ribbon cutting. If anybody can attend that, that would be appreciative. Okay, that's what I've got in my report. Are there any questions? If not, move on to the administrator's report.
Okay, number one there on the agenda, discuss possible action on closing pool construction line of credit. We're no longer in need of the line of credit at the bank. This was the very large line of credit that we had open. So in order to close it, I checked with the bank, it's just an email or a letter from myself stating that we'd like to close it, but it was agreed upon with the bank and myself that it should be transparent and come forth to the council for official approval to close that. So I would be looking for a motion to move to close that line of credit for the pool project.
Again, as we said, we don't need it, it's not good to have lines of credit open that you're not going to use, and so on so forth. Would somebody like to make a motion to go ahead and we would close that line of credit and have instruct the city administrator to send a bank, or a letter to the bank saying that? Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to close that credit line and send a letter to the bank.
Second.
We have a motion in second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion's agreed to.
Okay, just a couple other things to touch base on. So, the real living EAP program has been implemented and is active. We're doing orientation next week with the, all the employees, so I sent an email out to all the department heads today to share a flyer with them to explain what it's all about, and hopefully we get a good turnout with the employees. It is for all employees, as if you recall. The new draft website design is completed, very excited to see that. It's now going, staff has looked at it and it looks fantastic. It's now going on to their, basically, it's a coding department who needs to kind of put it all into action for us. Once we have that, we'll let everybody, you know, review it again, and then move forward. Looking for, hopefully to have live, I'm hoping by mid-March. They said it was going to be a four to six weeks out to get the design back, and then we'll just have to add things to it and get it to go live. So I'm hopeful that you all think that it's fantastic looking too, it's a huge improvement. So, and then just one quick thing for the January twenty second council meeting, there will be, Ellers will be here to discuss, or maybe virtually to discuss the water study. We had to do the water study report and get all that together to send the PSC to take care of those water rates, the water rate study. So they'll be looking for some council approval on a resolution to move that forward to the PSC, Public Service Commission. So, any questions for me? Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, no other questions for the administrator? Okay, we move on to public safety, Chief Ridgeway?
Couple quick things here, Jackson Boynton's in his field training with Sergeant Schellmore. Two of them are going to be working some night shifts over the next couple of weeks. Logan's had some military training obligations through the National Guard. So they'll be wrapping up their training by the end of December, Jax will be out on his own. On December thirtieth, the department attended active shooter training down in Pepin. Brandon and I were a couple of the organizers with that, along with the sheriff's office and the public police department and the Buffalo County Sheriff's Office. So that was a really good training. We did law enforcement during the day, and then at night we had the local fire departments and ambulance services came down, and we did some tactical rescues and worked on active shooter scenarios down at the Pepin schools. We did this in Duran a couple of years ago, did it in Pepin this year. Our plan is to probably do it in Buffalo County at a school in Buffalo County next year. It's nice to get all the agencies together, everybody works together really well, and we kind of make it a big group training. So it was a really good, really good day of training, long day, but it was a really beneficial day for everybody. Our new squad, some of the equipment's arrived, it's got graphics on it, we're probably looking at about another month before we have all the equipment we need on that. So that's an update on our squad car. And then the only other thing I have is an agenda item.
Any other questions for the, for Chief Ridgeway? If not, we got discussion of possible action, an approval for the chief to work special events and grant assignments.
So the council approved a few years ago for me to work Ashley for the Arts. It's fully refunded by the, by Ashley. And then probably seven, eight years ago, we had had a traffic safety grant. Council had approved for me to work that event as well for overtime, it was fully refunded by the state. We had one last year and it didn't come for approval, and we kind of struggled filling some of the shifts. We did have a lot of officers that wanted to work a lot of the overtime and things. So we talked about it, and I thought, I felt like I could help out and fill some of the shifts. Again, it's fully refunded by the state. And so I'm asking for approval to basically work any sort of special event or grant assignments that would pay over, an overtime rate or my full-time rate, either or, and then be reimbursed to the city without having to come to you guys for each individual event, just give me a blanket authority to work those events, as long as it's going to be a reimbursed event. I can work with the city administrator on which events they are when it comes up.
And not shorting staff, of course.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, any discussion concerning the request? As I said, obviously, he understands the staffing situation first, and then the second thing is that obviously it's fully paid for by other sources, I mean, that's the... Would somebody like to make a motion accordingly?
Make a motion, we approve that chief be allowed to work special events and other things.
Other grant assignments.
Your second, there's a motion in second. It's on the floor for any further discussion? Hearing none, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion's agreed to.
Thank you.
Okay, next we move on to the fire department. Chief King can't be here, but are you deputy chief or assistant chief, or what? James Settlemeyer's here, we feel honored to have you in the room.
Second assistant chief, right?
James, go ahead, the floor's yours.
All right. Month of December was fairly busy with calls, nothing too crazy, some car accidents and vehicle fire here in the city that was, Cruz did a great job on. Santa came to town in December, it was, it had a great turnout, bigger than years past. I think the sheriff's department had a pretty good response for their food drive. And then, the real last thing, for our training, we did, went up to the hospital, went on a tour up by them, we did a fire alarm, guys got inside the boiler room and saw boiler room, the fire alarm system and everything, and they did some training on the new gas meters that we got there, sniffers, they have sniffers on to detect what type of gas it possibly could be. And I guess the last thing I got is, we're going to be going through and redoing our SOPs and SOGs, which is standard operating procedures and standard operating guidelines, and updating them, and we're going through a company that's going to put it online for us, or will be able to have it online. So that'll be upcoming event here in the coming months. A lot of time and effort will be going into that.
Any questions for the fire department?
Those are the best, Kyle?
Yeah. Hearing none, we'll move on to the ambulance. Director Bignell could not be here this evening, but Chief Ridgeway's going to cover her report.
So yeah, Angie had sent me her report in, in December, she wasn't at that one, so we had, I'm going to give you the December and January reports, but December, we had thirty-six calls, one transfer that we had to decline, and transfers from Bonomi to Wacross. We were scheduled to do winter driving, four-wheel drive, we didn't have enough staff available, so we didn't have a meeting that night. Upcoming events, no upcoming events, and we raised thirty-two hundred dollars at the craft fair back in November. Upcoming trainings, the active shooter training at Pepin schools, we had two members attend that training from the ambulance service. That was December's report. January's report, we had thirty-two calls, zero transfers, and our training is on the fifteenth here in January, and we're going to work on burn patients. No upcoming events, and then the ambulance service also received a private donation of ten thousand dollars to go towards new monitors for our rigs. And then upcoming trainings, Wednesday conference and expo in January twenty-first through twenty-fourth in Green Bay. Those are the two reports that she asked me to share with you guys.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to public works utilities, engineers report, Russ?
Yes, good evening. Couple quick engineering projects in the works, the first one, the water filter plant project. We just received the letter from PSC today from the staff to the chair of the PSC asking for a ninety-day extension of our water filter plant review by PSC. They stated the reason for it was staff workload and staff taking PTO time during the holidays. So what it does is it extends, next week was our first ninety-day deadline, the sixteenth of January, so this ninety-day extension will extend the review to April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, but they mentioned they don't believe it'll take that long to finalize the approval of the project, so some unfortunate news there. That does ready to report that the deadline would be ending in January unless they did an extension. This afternoon, we got the extension letter, I think Matt got a copy too. The other project, the small Seventh Avenue East project, Street and Storms are proposed for twenty twenty-five, we're actually making a lot of progress ahead of our, our schedule that we provided for our contract. Where we're at now, probably impending on advertising that project in the January, beginning of February, and open bids in February, so it's going real well and ahead of schedule. So, that's a one block, three hundred line of feet, Street and Storms. That's all I have, if anyone has any questions?
Any questions for the city engineer? Okay, we'll move on to December report, public works director, Gellus.
Couple things, Christmas lights will be coming down tomorrow or Friday, forget which exact day it was, but they'll be done by the end of the week. The flags are at half-staff, for those of you that may or may not know, they're at half-staff for former President Carter that passed away, and that half-staff order goes until the end of January. So they will be at half-staff for the entire month of January, so just in case anyone gets any questions as why it's so long after that. Pool project, as the mayor stated, moving along, the stainless steel gutter is currently being installed and welded into place the last couple of days. I was not up there today to see how far they got, but they were probably, oh, I'd say not quite half-done last night, early morning today. They're also working in the building, majority of the pumps are set, the furnace is in, a lot of the plumbing is in for the pool portion of it. The domestic plumber will be in here in the next couple of weeks, and the electrician will be in here in the next couple of weeks, just are doing a lot of their wiring. So project is, is moving along up there as well. Last but not least, Madison Street, give you a little update on kind of my timeline for that. For the month of January here, Russ and I are going to sit down, first bring Tracy up to speed on the actual project and what our plans were, and then we'll sit down, go through the plans, see if there's anything that we can, any cost savings throughout there that we can have. We'll put a new, we'll get new numbers, a new cost estimate put together by the end of this month. Then the month of February, we will try to get that new cost estimate to Ellers, and then once Ellers has the time to review the cost estimate and put their financial statement together, we'll hopefully get it back to you in front of the council with the plan of attack. I would venture to say March, April, depending on how, how Ellers timeline figures out there. So by April, we should have things looked at, up to date, and some sort of a plan for you to approve for a potential bid late fall of twenty-five. Other than that, other than what's on the agenda down below, I don't have any more than to say any specific questions.
Any questions for Public Works? Okay, we'll move on to discussion of possible action regarding the purchase of the new Public Works pickup truck. Again, this was a budgeted item for this year, but I think as you people know, I usually like for these expensive items that we still get it back in front of the council to know exactly what we're buying. There was a sheet included in, in your packets that lists the bids. Matt, if you want to talk about those?
Yeah, so our twenty twenty-five pickup truck, it'll be all white, all of these options are white four-door crew cab, pricing comes from Ewald Automotive Group. They are the group that essentially gets all the state bidding, state pricing, so they're the only ones that have to essentially honor the state pricing. The local ones don't have to honor that, so that's why we get our best pricing from them. As you can see, the price is in front of you, GMC Sierra is the, we'll call it the cheapest bid. Also, we did look into trading in, trade costs for the twenty fifteen that we will be getting rid of. Their trade allowance is nine thousand five hundred dollars, that's what they would allow us. We feel that we can sell that online ourselves for more than ninety-five hundred. So the, whatever we sell that for will come off of this cost, obviously. So what we're, what I'm recommending is the GMC Sierra for forty-six thousand five forty-five.
And maybe want to mention that we've had pretty much all Fords for quite a run here.
Yeah, this is the...
This is one of the first times we've gotten into...
The first time that Ford has been beat in all of my years of buying pickup trucks, and actually got beat by both GMC and Silverado, so...
So your recommendation is to get the GMC?
My recommendation is to go with the GMC Sierra.
Does someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Public Works for the GMC Sierra fifteen hundred at forty-six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars for the new Public Works truck.
Second.
We have a motion in second? Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Weissapple.
Yes.
Councilmember Raceler.
Yes.
Councilmember Manke.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Motion's agreed to. Next, move on, confirming the hiring of Gregory Boygensen as the pool director. Would like to thank the city administrator and Public Works director for going through the process, and we have, that we're, to hire Gregory Boygensen. Gregory has been a lifeguard with us before, he's obviously a local, but pretty much everybody at the table probably knows him. And of course, he works as a teacher up here at the school. And again, and already started to sort of work with them to move forward, now we're going to get staffing in place. If there's no questions, if you have any, feel free to ask, otherwise, could I get a motion to confirm Gregory Boygensen as the pool director?
I'll make a motion, we confirm Gregory Boygensen as pool director.
Second.
We have a motion in second? Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion's agreed to. Next, we have discussion of possible action regarding the pool fee schedule. The one thing that we do know now is that obviously, and you folks are aware, that we did receive a donation to help offset the cost of operating the pool, to keep the cost down for people to attend either as a daily admission, or punch cards, or membership, or whatever it is. We have figured that in, there was included in your packet. Basically, what it falls into is the, originally, when we talked about three different options, it sort of falls in that middle category with the use of the donation to help us get to our budgeted numbers. The proposal that has been put forward is a two-dollar daily admission, two dollars just to use the showers, that's of course, we get a few people who come up, gentlemen people are at the campground, or so on so forth. The, the idea about going to punch cards instead of memberships, and as I've mentioned before, this is a little bit of a change, a shift in what we've always done in the past. We've always had in the past, individual memberships, and of course, family memberships. Probably the great majority were all family memberships, I don't think we had a lot of individuals, did we? There's a few, I suppose.
There's a few.
There's a few. With the idea of the punch cards being that anybody could use them, in the past, there's been some concerns about if somebody has a family membership, who all gets included under that, and so on so forth. But anyway, so that's going to be open for discussion, doing, I, I have at least one person who, who mentioned something about, well, they really just like that membership, throw that card or whatever, go in, and this just happened to be somebody who comes in on the morning crew, the adults that come in, that just, just to make, make life easier. And then we'll get to discussing it, but if, Matt, if you want to quickly explain about the lessons there, about what we charge for lessons, and then of course, you notice here that if it's somebody outside the school district, gets charged more, but we, because we get reimbursement from the school district, our lessons are, we conduct them, the city does at the pool, but the school counts these as summer school, and then they can reimburse us for part of it. Matt, if you want to explain that quick?
Correct, so cost to run lessons is fifty dollars a kid. The school reimburses twenty-five dollars a kid, so then we charge twenty-five dollars a kid. So the school has a fund through summer school that they fund essentially fifty percent of the, of the cost of swimming lessons. That doesn't necessarily mean if we raised it to seventy-five that they would raise theirs, they're just agreed to that twenty-five dollars. So if you live in the school district, you essentially, the school will pay for twenty-five of your lessons, and then you pay twenty-five dollars here for your lessons. If you live outside of the Duran, Arkansas school district, you pay the full fifty-dollar rate.
And again, as we said, that, that's always worked quite well for us, and again, obviously, if you're in the school district, you should get a better deal, and so on, but if, and again, if somebody from outside the school district wanted to do it, they'd be charged the full fifty dollars.
Has it ever been a problem to, like, first come, first served to the school district people? Has it ever been an issue with staffing problems, or?
No, we've never, when, when it comes to sign up, we don't let school, we don't, we don't look at where they live, it's just first come, first served, or sign up, we've never had an issue with a school district kid getting kicked out of a class for a non-school district kid. Most of the time, we don't, when we're signing them up, we don't even look at that.
Should we be? Does it matter?
Could be, it's, it's all going to be in the new form, so when we see the form to sign them up, we'll know immediately if that family is in or out of the school district. There'll be a box that they'll have to check, so as soon as we go to sign them up, we'll know on the box. Just in a kind of a history of, of some of this too, we've known for years, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, that our pool is, is underfunded. The city taxpayers are funding anywhere from fifty to sixty-five percent of the pool. We're only bringing in anywhere from twenty-two to thirty thousand dollars a year in revenue, and we're spending anywhere from sixty to sixty-six thousand dollars in expenditures. So we've known for years that we've had to change our rates, and we've always kind of, well, we'll deal with that when we get to the new pool. Obviously, this year, we got that nice donation. Part of the punch card reason too is, as the mayor alluded to, fifty percent of our family passes we're getting, taking advantage of where Mr. Gellus would get a family pass, and he would put all of his grandchildren, all ten of his grandchildren on there. That was not the intent of the pass, and we can't expect thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids to enforce that type of stuff. Also, we were getting, I'll just keep using myself for example, if I hired a babysitter to watch my kids for the summer, the babysitter is not immediate family, they are not eligible. So we were getting a lot of misuse of the, the way the family pass was designed. Going to this punch card route alleviates all of that. It also alleviates our thirteen and fourteen-year-old bathhouse attendees from trying to figure out who you are, where you live, all that type of stuff. It's one punch, one person, one punch. It doesn't matter if you're, if your relatives from California come back and you want to take them to the pool and use your package of punch cards, you just, one person, one punch, walk through the door. So it's going to be a lot easier for the staff at the pool, it's going to be a lot easier for staff selling these cards. Um, and we just kind of believe that, that's something we would like to try. It's a trial basis, right? If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
The one thing that we said that we, if we did this, that we would offer, because I know in the past, we've always had a book or whatever with the memberships in there, is to have some sort of a card file, because to expect kids to bring back that punch card every time, especially if they're coming from home and they live eight, ten blocks away and, and so on and so forth, is that we could put the cards on file. So I'm so-and-so's, you know, and, and, and again, I think most of the local families that would be, would have that. The, the kids working at the pool would know them. But again, as I said, it's still one punch whoever walks in. Yeah, they don't have to worry about sitting there saying, you know, you know, I'm with such and such family, so on and so forth. I've got, they look up, oh yeah, you got punch cards here. Because they give us seventy-five dollars, you get four punch cards for forty-eight punches.
Could you put like an initial underneath the punch cards, see initial like what kid it is?
Yeah, it's so like, I mean, we can most definitely do that. We'll just use a whole punch, because if you punch it at home, you're just losing your own, right? So I mean, and, and you'd be, they'd be fooled to have someone else punch it for any particular reason.
A parent shows up and they're like, what kid used all my punches?
Yeah. Initial, you know, lifeguard.
It's like, does anyone blame?
Yeah, that, that's
And as I said, we can work on that system to see.
We can work on some of that type of stuff. Where we come up with a bundle of four, so again, four cards, it's twelve punches a card. As the mayor alluded to, that's forty-eight trips into the pool. The pool is only open for the month of, of, for the, sorry, for the year of twenty twenty-five. Um, we're just gonna pretend that the pool, the, we're ready to open, right? We would not open until June fourth, based on when school gets out, well, the training days, I need to get staff ready. So it'd be June fourth, and then we're always closed around the fifteenth of August. So we're talking seventy-one days of a swim season here in the month of twenty twenty-five. That's if the, the pool is ready to go on June first, right? Uh, minus out some rain days, minus out swimming lesson days, we're, we're down to only about fifty-five full open swim days, right? So one bundle of punch cards is just about gonna get you the entire season. You might have to buy one more if you really want to come, and that's if you're gonna come every single day. So that's kind of where that, that number originated of four for forty-eight.
So is that, explain that, so it's four punch?
It's four cards of twelve punches.
So if my family of four goes there, that's four punches?
No, yeah. So you're getting forty-eight total punches?
So I can only go twelve days?
You can, your, your, your whole entire family can go twelve days. But the end of the day, if you don't go, you, your kid can use your punches, you know? Not all four members of the family go all the time, so.
And I think it's important to note too that when, because Matt and I kind of worked through this. Doing the twelve punches on the card, it's giving everybody two extra free days in. It's, it's a reduced price. So it's, we're charging for ten punch, for ten punches, but they get, they get twelve. So it's like two extra punches on those cards.
And then if you buy the four card price, you're actually getting another two and a half days off, because the price went down five more dollars. So, so if you buy the four card system, you're essentially getting fifty days into the pool.
So I get the ease of all of this, but I also see the taxpayers that live in the city paying more for it. Do we need to offer that? I mean, I, I make that harder for people, but.
For this first year, we have agreements with our donor that donated the money, the town of Lima and the school district that everyone, they are, they were all adamant when they donated that the residents outside of town pay the same rate as the residents inside of town. I'm wholeheartedly with you. I believe our, you know, we're, we're funding, I'm a taxpayer, I'm funding this, I should get a better break than someone that's not a taxpayer. I, I'm with you. But we have essentially have made agreements with these organizations and these donors at minimum for this first year that they get city rate. Correct, man?
Yeah. So is this price that we're shooting for, this is with the donation?
This two-dollar admission is with, with
So essentially, next year, it'll double?
It could. So right now, we are basing this off of, of twenty-three and twenty-two attendance. And I all, we also have not a, a real good data on how many people are gonna come in and how many people are gonna buy these punch cards. So we could, we have a system in place that we're gonna keep better track of this year. So next year, we could say, oh, you know, four thousand people, we, instead of selling a hundred punch cards, we sold two hundred punch cards. The price might not necessarily have to go to five, could only have to go to four, could only have to go to three, based on our attendance and, and the data that we collect through this year. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of data to help me concrete set these, these numbers.
And by the way, I think we should, uh, where, and this is just if it's temporary laminated sign or something near where people check in and, and tell them, thanks to our gracious donors who helped to do this, to hold the cost down for year one, and they can read it and say, okay, um, this is, because maybe next year, someone else will step forward. And we can worry about that then, but you're right, they have to know that. The reason why we got, is because somebody gave us money to do it.
And I would recommend having both of these up there. This is this year's reduced rate, but this is our, gonna be our standard rate.
If somebody wants it, they have available, you have to see.
Would we, should we consider additional punch cards being cheaper?
So you're saying a fifth punch card would be less than seven to a six punch card?
I'm just thinking for like a big family, like are we, are we essentially, you know, kind of pricing them out of being able to use it?
Or like if we, if a family of three goes every day that it can be opened at ballpark, they're gonna pay two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Does that matter to us to price them out of it if?
Yeah, I'm, so what is very difficult for me is what I need going forward in the future is I need you guys to dictate to us that we only want the taxpayers to fund the expenditures up to X dollars, and then I can come up with a better schedule, right? I have no idea if you, we've been funding this pool fifty to sixty percent over the years. Do you only want that to be thirty percent, twenty percent? Then I can come up with a better schedule based on, based on those numbers. Right now, I'm, I'm trying to get us as close to, what you know?
Basically, this is, this year's gonna be a learning curve, and what you have here is basically gonna cover what we are predicting the costs of this year.
Correct, and I, and I understand, I understand where you're coming on the fam, that family's gonna be two hundred and twenty-five dollars if it, if it helps in the conversation. We have called around to some of the local pools and everyone for a family pass is in that one ninety to two fifty for a year family pass. That's Menominee, that's Wabashaw, that's Ellsworth. So we actually fall, if, if you do the math on the punch card system like you did there, we're falling kind of right in the middle of that.
Are we tying punch cards to a specific family?
No, that punch card walks out the door, I don't care if you use it or you give it to him or, and then give it to her. It's twelve punches, you walk in the door, that card gets twelve punches.
My suggestion to what having a card file is just to help a family so the kids don't have to drag it back.
Right. No, I was just thinking along the lines of, you know, we figured this amount of punches, and so if there's certain families that use it all of the time, like, we've kind of figured on this, is it really costing us more for somebody to use it additional times?
Yeah, as long, to me, you're, that card is worth twelve punches. If Matt Gillis wants to buy that card and give it, and use it five times and give the rest of it to Nick, he's, he gets, he gets the remaining punches, because he paid for ten punches. And to me, that's why it's gonna be a lot easier for us if you just walk through the door, you got punches on a card, you're in the building.
Will those punches roll over?
No, it'll be year, year-to-year punches. So every year, we'll be creating, so this year will be twenty twenty-five punch cards, it'll be twenty twenty-six.
If you get close to the end of the year and you're out of your punch card, it would behoove him to do a, either
Single or?
A single day pass for two dollars.
And this, obviously, we put a situation if some other group that wants to help kids out, if they want to buy a bunch of punch cards and hand them out to people. Go ahead.
I like the idea of one punch, one person, you don't have to figure out what's going on where.
A lot easier process.
Any other comment you made about, now, you said some of these other places still offer the family, but that's obviously much more expensive.
Correct, some of them, one, one of them is doing the punch card like we are. Um, and two of them offer family passes, but the cheapest one is like a hundred and ninety bucks and the most expensive one is like two fifty. So they, they are equipped, they are, you know, two hundred dollars north to, to get in for a family pass for a year. Which is, we've always known we need to get to, it's just how, getting to there. With the old pool, we kept them low, because it was an old pool, not a lot of attractions. You know, I kind of, I'm kind of anticipating this first year, there's gonna be a lot of people coming in and checking it out, right? And seeing if you like it. We are now also attracting infants, and if you see under here, two and unders free. Look on the bottom there, I don't know if anyone got that part, but two and unders free to get in. So, uh, we, we are hoping to get a lot more of that zero to five, six-year-old that we never got in the past, because it's gonna touch the bottom.
Yeah, and so with the, with the zero grade entry and the, the kid, the stuff for the little kids, if some, this opens it up to more families that, that can utilize it. We used to have a kiddie pool that was a separate body of water, and I don't know, how many years, well, how many years ago did we cement it over?
Oh, that's been close to ten, I bet.
At least, yeah. And stuff, what ended up happening was the state came in and said that the, the kiddie pool was a separate body of water. Since it's a separate body of water, it needed its own pumping and its own filtration system, too expensive. We cemented over it, so, but now this opens it up again, you know?
Is there any interest in doing like adult swims or teaching aerobic classes or anything? So it's not just, the revenue isn't just falling on families with kids?
So we do have adult, we do have adult swim in the morning, so from six to eight in the morning is adult only. Adult swim, and they do do some, you know, they have their aerobic water weights and stuff. They do it on their own, nobody teaches it, but, and, and then from noon to one is also adult lap swim only.
And that's a punch?
It'd still be a punch to get in, yeah.
So can they come back later in the day though?
Yeah, so it'd be one, what we're looking is one punch for one day. So essentially, what we, we gotta, you know, figure out a way to, whether they get a token to come back or it's a, you know, an X on the hand, but yeah, we only want it to be one punch for the day. So the, the person that comes at six in the morning and wants to come back at noon, is not getting a second punch.
You just write the day on the punch card if you can.
Yeah, that, that as well. But those are the, the intricacy things that we haven't fully worked out yet. We're just trying to get a more of a price hammered out now, but by any means, we only want you to one punch for the entire day.
And, and again, as I said, staff's had conversation about that idea of saying, okay, let's, we gotta get this first year in. We had an idea what our expenses are, we had our idea of our revenues, and then let's sit down and say, we gotta talk about in the future, the city's in a certain point, and we need to structure our pricing accordingly.
Are these being purchased here or up there?
Both. If you can come down here and purchase some, you can purchase them right at the door.
This is gonna be a real big learning curve here.
They'll be available here only until obviously the first day of the pool, so that's why we kind of gotta do both. And then we'll continue to do both throughout the, throughout the season.
I like it, that's my first thing.
Thank you. Yeah, we do know that Tracy Madder obviously put a lot of effort into this, and I've met with him a number of times and gone over it. And then we found out about the donation, and we were trying to find where that all fit into the, fit into everything, so. Okay, um, if you want to approve it, we can approve it. It is, does somebody want to see something else? I know I've heard over here somebody saying, well, maybe we could have one bigger bundle for a bigger family and have a little bit of a break. Do, do we want to add, do, you know, I mean, we know there's forty-eight punches in the bundle?
Change it to thirteen punches or fourteen punches too. Twelve was just a, basically, we just picked, I didn't throw it at a wall.
Could we throw the baker's dozen?
Being the first year opening.
Definitely change it to thirteen, right?
We could throw a baker's dozen in and so, so forth.
For an extra price or for the same price?
I mean, if you went to thirteen and you kept it the same, I, I don't, I'm not getting
I don't think
Being the first year, you know, obviously, my biggest thing is losing money, because we've lost it for decades, so. I think this is a good system to try and see, and then go through it at the end of the year and analyze it and
You have some tracking to do.
See if we find, see if it works.
We did, we did comment that this is gonna, this year is going to be an anomaly, because depending on when we open, how long we can be open, if this is gonna work, there's gonna be excitement about it, so it's gonna probably draw more people than there will next year or even in twenty twenty-seven. So this year might be a, a bit of an anomaly, and, and we'll just have to gauge, you know, how, how it goes.
Yeah, as well as our, our expenses are probably at the lowest. This year, in theory, it's just labor, chemicals, right? And some office supplies is our expenses. As we move down the road, right? You know, you're gonna have some pump, you're gonna have, you're gonna have pump repairs, your expenses are gonna go up. So you might only see expenses this year of say fifty, sixty thousand. Three years, they might be eighty thousand.
You don't think we're gonna lose ten thousand gallons of water a day?
I don't guarantee anything, but I'm very hot, I'm very, I can say with great certainty, it ain't gonna be that.
And we do know one thing, that furnace is warming up the water slightly more efficient than the one we took out, as we burn through gas like no tomorrow.
Correct, and, and, and I'll tell you the same thing I tell other people, right? Just because it's new doesn't mean the power bill is gonna be less, because we got more efficient pumps. You gotta remember, we got more pump, we got more pumps. We got two pumps instead of one pump, right? And we got different style equipment in there that's drawing different power rates. Even though they're, they're more efficient, there's more of them, so it might equal itself all, right? So it just, we don't go into it thinking that our, our, we're gonna save a ton on utility bills and things like that either, so.
How do you feel about the schedule, if you, with the fourth opening in June, as opposed to how far they are along right now?
Optimistic.
Okay. I know it's all weather.
It's really weather related, right? Like, I have no, I have no doubt we can get it done, but we get a, we get a foot of snow on, on April fifteenth. I'm, I am up at Creek, you know? So it, it's literally one hundred percent all on Mother Nature, which is what I'm trying to leave here. Trying to get as much outside work done as we possibly can while we don't have any snow, uh, just to alleviate that burden. But, you know, as we all know, we get a foot of snow, um, the fifteenth of April, and, and it's here for two weeks. Not much I can do about it.
Turd shovel.
Matt, Matt, has there been any discussion about, I think I, somebody talked about it, about, um, having adults or whatever, older people become lifeguards or whatever, so that, that we could have maybe a little later into the fall? Or any, John? Kinda.
So if adults, if adults wanna go out and become certified, just keep in mind that pool cannot be open without a lifeguard in it. That's, that's state rule, that no one can be in that building, in that pool area without lifeguards present.
Correct.
So if, if adults wanna go get their lifeguard certification and they wanna work the pool, you know, we can, we can look at and see what something like that will look like. But we also have to understand that this pool is costing us money to operate, even if no one's swimming in it. So if no one's gonna swim in it on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and we're just gonna open it on a Saturday and Sunday, all of the chemicals still have to go in and all of the pumps still have to run. So you gotta really look at the cost of what those five days of nobody in it versus the luxury of two days of swimming. So there's, there's a lot that goes into it, other than just do we have an adult that can keep the pool open for longer, right? So those are conversations that we all have to have.
And the swim club has talked about that, and I've talked with them, and they've, they've said about the possibility. And I, I, and I said, the first key is finding the people that will do it. I mean, because we don't get the bodies, it's, it's, you know? But again, then bring together a plan, and as we said, we gotta balance that all out with everything else that, that comes along with the cost and so on and so forth. But they, there were some members of swim clubs who talked about that they would like to do that, uh, find people that possibly would do it. As I said, well, first we need the people, and then we'll go from there.
That is just something to think about.
Okay, any more discussion on this? As I said, we can go with the recommendation that we would go ahead and do the pricing accordingly. Does anybody want to add anything, subtract anything? Would somebody like to, uh, uh, make the, um, a motion to go ahead with the, um, the, the swimming pool as presented, the swimming pool, uh, prices as?
I'll make a motion, we approve the pool fee schedule as presented by the Public Works Director.
We can second that.
We have a motion and second. And by the way, this, and of course, they don't need a punch to get a lesson, that's included in the cost.
That's included in the cost.
Yes, they do, that's all, okay. Okay, is there any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Motion's agreed to. Okay, let's pay the bills, right? Just mentioning the next meeting, of course, will be coming up on January twenty-second. Just mentioning the next meeting, of course, will be coming up on January twenty-second at six-thirty. As I mentioned before, within the next few months, about getting together an economic development and a parks committee coming up here in the next couple of months. Any other committees that we know of? We don't have any appeals, we don't have any zoning things, we don't have anything. Go on. Any department heads need a public safety meeting? We had a public works to talk about seventh, seventh avenue project tonight, but nothing else as far as you know to choose for anything?
You have a good vacation, I guess.
I did, yes, I did, it was very nice. Got a little painting done, a little organizing in the basement.
No Bahamas.
That doesn't sound like vacation.
Oh, believe me, it was, it was okay. The simple things alike, right? Yeah.
Somebody like to make a motion to approve the vouchers?
Make a motion to approve the vouchers? Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the vouchers. We'll call them.
Councilmember Minkie?
Yes.
Councilmember Weisenbach?
Yes.
Councilmember Weisampel?
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler?
Yes.
Councilmember Catalon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker?
Yes.
Any other future issues or agenda items? And if not, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ten seconds. Motion and second.